All right, you order please rise with us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this law which governs the people.
So the sheriff from the hall room?
Here.
Order?
Here.
Fire?
Here.
Plastics?
Here.
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 Alright, move back number two. Comment, a question. After the direction to the mayor, she will begin up to three minutes to comment on topics on his agenda only. She has given one opportunity to speak. If anyone wants to come in later.
Mary Poppins?
Can you speak up so I can hear you?
Mary Poppins?
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, for Governor of the Eastside Hunt?
How you doing?
There is going to be a get your Easter bunny? Is that any of the charter trouble? And who is the one who is giving out all the pictures? What does that mean?
I would encourage you to talk to the chair afterwards for that meeting. Cause it's not part of the agenda.
It's part of the agenda.
It's not part of the one of the agenda is we're always on a A and S neck. So you can get with the, um, chair for that meeting.
Okay.
Alright, alright. John, please finish it here. For her, please finish it. Alright. I don't see anyone coming to the mic from room side number three. Reports from. Okay, if you have questions or comments, please come to the mic. Move them right along. So, Mr. Burges?
I have some questions right there. I'd like to know, why didn't the moderator or the moderators? Why didn't they let the puppet answer some of the questions?
Hey, are you asking questions about what's on the agenda? Tonight's agenda item is open. Tonight's a, tonight's a business meeting, a board meeting. This is on agenda items only. If, if you got some questions afterwards, I'll sit down and talk to you. If I can answer them, I'll try, but sorry. Alright, anyone else for agenda items only tonight? Alright, move right along to the mayor's board. First of all, I just want to make sure everyone knows that this Saturday from nine AM to eleven, we've got Meet the Mayor here at the Village Hall. Uh, come out and ask those questions. If you have any other questions, uh, go for it and come out. There are a lot of things going on, a lot of things you're going to talk about what's going on this weekend, but we have the full view of another series of Village Hall. We've got the, uh, Meet the Mayor at nine o'clock. You've got the, uh, Arts and Crafts Show, uh, once you come to the community center. You've got the senior show at the cookhouse. So, uh, we've got a lot of things happening here at the Village Hall and in our municipal, uh, centers. So look forward to them coming out. Uh, this last, uh, what's his name? This last Sunday, Grace United Church of Christ, they had a prayer event on different corners, uh, here in Sawtooth, praying for, to stop the violence and pray for our community. Uh, pray for our leaders. They did participate in that. Had a, um, uh, pretty good turnout. Uh, they had a, a muncher or something that they asked to work at the church, which I didn't think they'd attend, but, uh, I did get to, uh, go out to one of the corners and spend some time, uh, with some of the ones, uh, that came out for that. So, I'd like to thank, uh, their, their, uh, their pastor there, Pastor Sheen. Uh, she's moved to the community and she's got, uh, a great vision and a great outlook about our community. So, yeah, I thank Pastor Sheen. I know that Pastor Fitz, his son came out when the corner I was at. So, uh, I'm going to thank Pastor Fitz for being involved also. So, we've got that, um, just let the residents know that yesterday I attended the senate preparation hearing on the LGDF and the property tax freeze that the governor is, um, uh, proposing. So, in your downtown with, uh, there's quite a few mayors from across the state, uh, and quite a few cops that were there. So, uh, we got to testify. I didn't, I wasn't one of those to testify. I just did an appearance and supported the mayors that were there for testifying on how the, um, the cutting of the LGDF funds, how it affects our village, uh, for residents to realize the LGDF funds, um, were these LGD funds. This is something that goes back to an agreement that was between the mayors of the state of Illinois going on, all the way back to nineteen sixty-nine. The governor's proposed that it's to cut fifty cents per, um, per resident. How that affects Sawtooth Village is that's over a half a million dollar cut in our budget for this next year. He's also, um, looking at cutting our NFT funds, uh, and there's other funds that come into this village. So, you know, we're looking at probably losing close to a half a million dollars. We are looking at losing a half a million dollars just on the LGDF, um, portion. We're looking at losing more of the other funds that their, uh, the governor's proposing to cut. So, this is a, uh, a tough budget. It's not just a tough budget for Sawtooth, it's a tough budget for every single community. And we figured City of Chicago, they were there. They're looking at losing close to one, one and a half million dollars in their budgets next year. Now, we, we put, uh, numbers to it, you know, wanted the senator to ask, what does that mean? You know, for the residents, I'm going to give you an example. Our police budget is around three million dollars. Over a half a million dollars, that would get to our police budget. Our fire budget, fire department budget is just under, um, uh, just a little over five hundred thousand dollars. Just about half a million dollars would be your entire fire department. You look at your public works department and, um, that varies about four point four million dollars. Uh, think about what that would do, losing a half million dollars for, for that. So, this is money that you use for your police department, your fire department, your public works, this is what we use for the services for our community when it comes to finding our streets, putting saw on our streets for safety. Uh, so, um, we were, uh, there, uh, before the senate preparation meeting, performing then what it does to our communities and how it's going to affect. If you think about it, it's just not affecting our person now and the services that we provide. It also affects how money go back into our community. So, um, mayor's things, take note on that. But that said, on Friday, the governor's coming to the state of Chicago. I already taken a day off for this, I have to make sure that the mayor represents those sufferers. Right now, we currently have eighty-two mayors that have already signed up to be there to meet with the, uh, meet with the governor. Uh, there's a push, it's maybe how many, or how many mayors we can get to, to attend this. So, uh, on Friday, I will be, uh, downtown again, uh, this time meeting with the governor. So, that, that's, uh... And I'm, and there's a couple of things here that I'll probably bring up at the end of the meeting, but, um, yes. So, I got to meet with some of our, our senators here, the Johnny Toddler and some of the other senators that affect our, our children and sufferers. I just talked to Senator Acy. So, so we got, that's a couple of them. And, um, I got to talk to Toy Hutchinson. She was there yesterday and again, there's some, uh, other senators that we talked to and remind their names. Uh, we're going to hold side on this. Uh, you're going to see that we're coming out with, from the mayor's offices. Um, we're coming out with some strong statements. Uh, at the same time, we're trying to work with our new governor, we're trying to work with our senate, trying to work with our house office members. Um, just trying to make sure that they understand that they have got these funds they're using for. So, that said, move to Village Hall February.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the sheriff's award coat drive was a success, but there's still plenty of coats in the hallway and by Friday they will probably be delivered to, um, a store of some sort locally. So, if anybody sees anything in the hallway that they could use or that they know somebody else can use. Uh, spring is here, it seems like it is, I don't know for how long. So, uh, please take advantage of the coats here in the hallway, they will probably be gone by Friday. Uh, second of all, there's a lot of important dates that I need to announce. Uh, first of all, starting with, uh, February twenty-sixth was the first day of applying for a mail ballot. Those are available online at the front desk at the Village Hall. Today was the last day of registered vote. However, I'm starting March eleventh, it's the first day of great security registration and voting. On March twenty-third, it's the first day of early voting. April second is the last day mail ballot applications are accepted, including military overseas. April fourth, last day of early voting. April fourth, last day of great security registration and voting. April sixth, the last day that mail ballots can be postmarked. And April seventh is election day. Also, uh, there was no meeting on March third and first, which is a fifth Tuesday. So, there's also no meeting on election day, which is April seventh. So again, we've got a couple of consecutive weeks with no meetings. The schedule that was, uh, put in the hallway and online and distributed at the beginning of the year showed that there was no meeting on April fourteenth. There will be a meeting on April fourteenth, cause that's the only day that the school district reduced student government. So, that schedule will be changed. Student government day will be April fourteenth and that's why we have to have a meeting that day. Due to the power testing, that was the only day and also they had, uh, their spring break coming up, so that's the only day that that could happen. And lastly, I would like to, uh, please again tell everybody, there's a lot of ways to get information about what's going on in your village and I wish people would take it in check. I'm hearing that, that there's a lack of communication and a lack of, um, us communicating with residents. I know everybody on this dais looks forward to speaking with our residents and making sure that they have correct information. So, we have the Sawtooth Village website, we have the Sawtooth Village Facebook information, Sawtooth Village information Facebook page. We have Sawtooth E-Blast. We have people at the front desk from eight to five Monday through Friday, willing to take, write your questions down and pass down to the appropriate person. I personally will take your phone calls, I will, uh, answer my, any emails. I'm not hearing any messages, I'm a part-time clerk. However, I do come in my office at least four or five times a week. I do listen to my messages and I do respond. And I know that the trustees and the mayor are the same thing, so please, if you have any questions, if there's anything that you're not sure of, if you're hearing information on the street, it's a political season, I get that, there's a lot of misinformation. If you're not sure what the truth is, I can direct you to minutes, I can direct you to the ordinance, to the resolution, I can direct you to the time and discussions for help. I can put you into touch with the person who has the facts. Please take time and find the facts out before you assume that everything you hear on social media is correct. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Very much. Move to Village Hall.
Uh, thanks Mayor, nothing to report tonight.
Move to reports of trustees and board committees, Parks and Recreation Committee, Justice Office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to remind everybody that the baseball signups are ongoing. They will be this Friday from five to seven. Saturday, we will have a table to craft show, so it will be from nine to three. And then again, on Monday, uh, they'll have from five to seven. Uh, the craft show will run at the Public Works Community Center from nine to three this Saturday. Come on out. Got quite a few vendors coming, so I need to get some people out and support this. Uh, Easter Eve hunt will be, uh, April fourth, starting at noon. We do have pony rides, magic, uh, magic die come and die and, uh, we'll have the Easter bunny and it will be for what's taken. I'd like to say thank you to the, uh, public works for their great job over the community center, the main roof of the community center and that, and it looks very nice. If you have a chance to come out and see it, come out and see it, see it. That, that's the community center, not the gym. The next part, our part will be the gym, so after they finish the little touch-ups in the, uh, community center. Again, thank, thank you very much for the work that they've done over there and that is my statement.
Thank you, trustee. Befication committee. Uh, and the befication committee is always looking for new committee members and we're always looking, uh, for fresh new ideas. The volunteers are always welcome as well. The committee meets on the third Wednesday of every month. The committee is discussing issue or suppositions along with fundraisers to help fund, um, the committee, uh, for the many of proj, the many projects that they have planned. The next committee meeting will be here at the Village Hall, March eighteen, at seven PM. Meeting will be held in the conference room, uh, as there is other events scheduled. Move to orders from committee trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of items tonight. First of all, the ordinance review committee will not be meeting this week. I'm still reading on some information from the police department on the, uh, uh, new ordinance and we really need that information as soon as we get it to, then act on it. And the second thing is that we have received word back from the controller. Uh, the new state controller, assigned us a controller that will be working with the village's Sawtooth Village. And we also have a state number assigned to us. Uh, Mr. Mohan said that, uh, they didn't contact the, uh, person today and everything goes through. Our first test tickets will be processed. There are fifty of them that are being addressed for the test cycle. Will everybody look out the, uh, uh, and then from that part on, they will receive them and I believe he said a hundred, a hundred at a time? A hundred or so at a time until he goes through the, the parallel items, which is about eighteen hundred of them. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. To Mayor Government Relations Committee, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, next meeting will be the first Thursday of May. We will not have a meeting this month nor April. It'll be the first Thursday of May here at Village Hall, seven o'clock. So all I have, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Neighborhood Watch Committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say that I really appreciate, um, the Neighborhood Watch Committee. I have a lot of hardworking block club captains and a hardworking committee that work ongoing every week, like an on-doors reminder residents to turn their front and back lights on. And I just want to, uh, thank them for the hard job and the hard work that they do continuously. It's not every other month or bi-monthly, this is a ongoing, uh, process that we have trying to engage the community to turn their front and back lights on. And people have volunteered their time at the committee doing it consistently. I just appreciate the committee for doing that with the Neighborhood Watch. And we had a very, very good meeting last night, a very interesting meeting. Trustee Myers and I got into some friendly fire, fighting, trying to answer residents' questions. They have a lot of questions that they want to ask. And he'll say, oh, I got to ask them, but she's not asking, she's asking this. So we have a lot of engaging back and forth with the residents about things that they want to know about it. It's just a really, really, uh, good committee that come out with some really serious questions and they will answer. And we had two candidates that stopped by last night and it was just a very good meeting. We also had a, um, a wonderful presenter, that's a licensed and registered respiratory director from her office. And she came and did a live demonstration for CPR. So, the block club captains are on their block and somebody passed, uh, they see somebody unconscious. We had, had a live demonstration. She showed them how to do the maneuver, the hiding maneuver and how to do CPR for an infant as well as an adult. So, we learned a lot last night that can help the residents of Sawtooth Village. And I just wanted to give that report tonight and thank trustee Myers again because he had to pull this chair over, cause we were really fighting, really fighting, going back and forth and answering these questions. It is, you have to come to Neighborhood Watch, I invite all of you to come. The second Monday of every month to the fire station is seven thirty, you will not be disappointed. We had a very good time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. With public relations committee, upper partnership committees, trustee Weathers.
Thank you. The student government essays were judged last week and winners were children. Um, for those of you that are not aware, the topic this year was, um, bullying and how it affected the students and, you know, what they would do to, to counter bullying. And just to say, um, so it was, it was challenging, challenging to find the winners. But the essays in total, as the committee, really kind of sent us to hear the stories that the kids were telling. Some were supposed to be a story, they made them into a story. Uh, some of them actually internalized the question and wrote them there. So, um, they definitely kind of made the committee think about what's happening in our schools and, um, how the kids are reacting to what's happening in our schools. So, um, just to let you guys know that as the Village Hall sets to the government, it will be April fourteenth. We thank everybody who came out for the, um, casino trip for fundraising, thank you very much. And also, we thank anybody who handed money to me today for the fundraiser. So we thank you for continuing to accept any donations. Um, just to make, thank you trustee Burgess, trustee Myers, Chief Chinkis and Chief Stock Bergen. Anybody else who would like to donate? Don't hesitate, bring some money to myself or my mother, first we've got work in. Uh, we still have time. Also, the Saw Talk will be ready Friday online as well as the Village Hall. Uh, for the Community Upper Partnership Committee, apologize to Chief Lewis, I did say, um, two weeks ago that we're not going to have a meeting today and, um, I failed to remind him of that. So we will be meeting two weeks from tonight. We do not need time because we will be exec session. So, bar an exec session. We will be two weeks. And that is my report.
No promises. Number five, reports of the park community's commissions. Fire Department nine one one commission, Chief Stock Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. Over, over the past two weeks, fire department responded seventeen calls. One vehicle accident, seven fire alarms, three medical assistance, three C-armed alarms, one stove fire, one truck fire and one electrical. I know it's been, um, published on, on TV and your handouts when, uh, the time change, we need to get these detectors, the batteries changed. Here lately, we've been picking up quite a few calls, getting out there and firing their batteries. It's your lives. Not my life, your lives. I change my batteries just a little again. And that's my report.
Chief, would you like to say anything about your fire department pancake breakfast on the twenty-ninth?
Oh, yeah.
From page one, March twenty-ninth, if you're not doing anything on Sunday morning, please come out to the fire department. It's a great, uh, it's a great breakfast, so.
It's, it's rare idea that the Easter bunny will be with the.
Great. Alright, thank you very much. So, bring your kids, bring your grandkids out, get pictures of these money. Alright, move to police fragment, Chief Alavis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, like a report, uh, lays calls for service for a time period of February twenty-fifth through March tenth. Police department responded to a total of seven hundred and seventeen calls for service. Uh, forty-nine days were suspicious activity. Hundred, one hundred and thirty-six traffic, forty parking violations, sixty-four other service. So, thirty-one domestic, ten disturbance. We responded to nine traffic accidents. Forty-seven burglar alarms, forty-seven ambulance deaths and one hundred and twenty-two building checks. I'd like to, uh, a positive note, I'd, uh, like to make a little bit of announcement here. The past weekend, our, uh, K-9 officer, Chad Fredrickson, along with K-9 Foco competed for the first time in the American Police K-9 Association. Let's say, uh, they have a big conference and, uh, they have a training where there's thirty K-9 teams now competing against each other. Uh, there's various, uh, avenues that they have to compete in. But it's, uh, drug protection, tracking, uh, weapons recovery, things of that sort. And I'd like to say that Officer Fredrickson and K-9 Foco placed six out of thirty teams and this is the first time they have ever competed. So, congratulations. And, uh, for those of you who don't know, Officer Fredrickson does spend a lot of time with his dog training and a lot of that is done on his own time. Uh, also, one other small thing is, uh, Officer Fredrickson is, uh, along with several Olympic boys sponsoring the K-9 fundraiser this Saturday at Jellies and Dyer. And that is from five PM to eight PM. And, um, I do have a few tickets here if anybody's interested. And I complete my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Is it that across the shows? Across from McDonald's, remember, I said you can turn the channel, you can turn in the other part of the jacket, it's actually like. Alright, thank you very much. Move to the Public Works Department, Director Pennmutter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, Public Works Department is a dear staff, so we need more staff, that's my first time. Ongoing problems on both, we've had some issues with some street light issues, some wiring issues. Um, we are, we don't have any control of the wire issues that connect to the backyards. Uh, these are combat issues. On the average, for a combat, like to get a hook back up to their own pole, it takes roughly about thirty days, sometimes it takes sixty days. It's under their scheduling or storm, storm scheduling or whatever their schedule might do. But we've had, uh, an ongoing, uh, two nineteen, January of two nineteen and Orion, both of those lights have been repaired by them. So, um, we do have to replace some of the new light heads, but the lights are lit. Uh, currently, we did have a location on two hundred and twenty-first between, um, Shirley and Paxton in the Well of Court. We had three lights out over there. Um, one we had got up and running on Yates and two hundred and twenty-first. The other two, we had a wire problem, which we fixed and took care of that. So, those two lights are lit and those are three brand new lights. So, if anybody wants to take a look at the new lights, there's three over right there in that end of the street. Um, ongoing, uh, with the weather conditions, uh, last, uh, one month ago, I reported about some fire incidents that we were being prepped. Um, we do not have an opportunity with the weather conditions of the last month to prep those, so we have our starting off preps for the two. Uh, one is on two seventeen place in Galene and the other one is at twenty thirty-six to eighteen. Alright, ashtray removal, as you can see, um, there are some trees that haven't taken down here in the east side of town. We did take down about twenty trees over there and that will be ongoing throughout the summer. Uh, if anybody has something that seems above the odd branches while in the hobby, uh, please call the Village Hall and we'll try to address it as quickly as we can. Storm branches throughout the winter, we did have a pretty late snowfall a month ago and we did have a lot of branches that were weighed down. Any residents who have branches, just the branches, not trees, are bringing them off for the pickup. We had just any storm branches, they're just a place to mount a curb and within the next few days, we'll be digging up in a couple of days and the beginning of the next, we are, please do not bring out any more than just what is dropped from the trees from the storm. Our first, uh, pickup over here will be made for and then you'll be able to place those up the curb and we'll pick up anything you take out of the yard. Uh, also, we have daily due emergencies we deal every day from, maybe from a warm rain or a snowstorm, which we've had quite a few lately, that does disrupt our, our scheduling a lot, which pushes us back. Um, during this time of the year also, when we do have some tree days, we do do a lot of inside work on the buildings. Uh, we've done some more at the police department, the community center, the Village Hall and our Public Works building. So, we did get to catch up a little bit on some of the inside work. Um, potholes, that's this time of the year, we're having the thaw right now. We roughly have, uh, a good six inches of thaw on top of a frost line still. It is the worst time of the year for the streets and parkways or anywhere you might go off road. So please stay on the road and, uh, we will get to the potholes. We are, we're going to be out probably the rest of this week and all of next week, we will do it at the county once. And, uh, this patch is considered a cold patch, it's a temporary patch. So, anything that comes out in the next month or so, we should be able to, the plants will open up as a permanent patch and we'll take care of those. Um, quiet zones, uh, we have two quiet zones in Sawtooth, one in Torrance, one in Cox Road. Um, every season so far, snow season, we've lost some of the delineators, which are just the dividers, um, that you can't drive around. The one in Torrance Avenue, where they're being damaged, we think by the trucking truck ran them over because the tracks went across them. But there were five damaged, three were replaced, the other two are still okay, so they're upright. And there was one knocked down over Cox Road and that's replaced, so the quiet zones are still effective. Water, we started our north side shut off list and we also have been back out doing our jets and digs, uh, ones that we have problems getting out of. And the final thing is Sawtooth is very this time of year, the winter time, um, with the snow being as much as the last few years, we have a lot of accumulation of garbage in piles of snow. And you won't see that until it melts and we've had a very long season, so the garbage is accumulated. I just ask that, please, the residents, help us. We will definitely clean our locations, if you clean yours, remind all your neighbors to clean up. Uh, very appreciative and ask them, don't dump it in the street, cause the streets are going to be out in at least another month and a half. So, um, thank you. And that is my report.
Thank you, trustee Burgess.
Yes, Kevin, I have a question. Um, the Clean Harbor rental trailer, are we still utilizing that or are we through utilizing that rental trailer that's over there?
Um, here's where the trailer has been disconnected, so technically we're not doing it.
Thank you. Just want to make sure it's on the campaign.
It's up to fifteenth of August.
Okay.
Alright, move to administration, administrative services director, Director Sherry DeHitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to go over here things. Um, for the month of January, Coe wrote eight fat tickets and in February sixty-one. Um, L is law command officially closed last week, so they're no longer in business. Advanced Auto, their roof has been leaking, so the plaza owner has, um, hired a licensed contractor and they have come in and they pulled a permit today, so they'll be starting work on that roof. And business renewal orders will start going out Monday, which I'm going to need the fire department to start licensing, um, and also, um, the invoices for, um, the vending machines. And then on April tenth, I'm going to start sending out the renewals for the contractors' licenses. And then on April 10th, I'm going to start sending out the renewals for the contractors licenses. So it's going to be a busy season for you and Debbie to sign the licenses. And that concludes my report.
I never complain on sign licenses.
Give me a stamp or I'll stamp it.
No, I'm sorry, I don't sign.
You know what, that's happening now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, last time when we met with the committee of the hall, I had asked if it would be okay, if I had talked to the owner of that property over there, and you know, it was to my discretion, so I did talk to Mr. Duncan at Lyft, and he just wanted me to share some sentiments that he shared with me. He said that he hadn't heard about any of those things that those companies needed, that he didn't know anything about that, and that nobody really told it to him. And I also mentioned to him about, you know, the different allegations that the owners had about no heat, that the bathroom not working, the doors not working, and about, you know, the roof leaking, and he said that he was going to take a look in Auto, at Advanced Auto, but he said that he had reached out an olive branch, and he named the businesses, I'm not going to name them all, but he said he had reached out an olive branch to those owners before they left. He offered them to cut their rent in half. He also made another incentive to stay in Saw Village, but every one of those businesses owners told him that it just wasn't profitable to be here, because the people in the village are not patronizing their business enough and to make enough money to keep their doors open, but it was certainly not because of anything that he was not doing as a landlord. So I told him that I would express that to the board at the man tonight and open. Immediately, he said that that would be fine, but he is willing to talk to and to work with anybody, and just call him as a landlord. I'm just letting you all to know, he tried to keep those businesses here. He was offering to cut all of their rent in half a month, but they still opted to leave because of door support, the living in the village.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, trustee, is it possible, since you was able to contact and I couldn't get him, can you get a, have him come and have a meeting with us, if at all possible, if he wants to?
Well, I would certainly call him, trustee Fredrickson, I would ask him, how did you want to meet with him in committee of the hall, or you want to meet with him in executive session?
Or meet him one-on-one, two-on-two, or whatever here in the village hall, whatever time he can make it. I'm sure, if he gives us a time, we can try to make it, whatever time he can get here.
All right, but not in executive session?
No.
Okay, so just ask him if he can come and meet with the committee of the hall?
He wants to meet with committee of the hall, or if he doesn't feel comfortable staying before the board or meeting before the residents, he can come meet with the trustees, so sometimes we're a couple trustees can meet with him, and I have no problem.
Okay.
Just let me know the dates in the committee, make sure it's mainly committee meetings, like, first one in April. There's no committee because of elections.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more committee meeting in March, that's the 17th, and then the last committee meeting is next on April 21st. So if you'd like to see if any of those dates are available?
Okay, just give them to me, if we're looking to that, because I'll call him tomorrow, and I'll see which one of those committees he can make.
Okay.
Okay.
I am glad, I'm glad to hear that he needs to get somebody coming to fix that road for the advanced auto.
Sherry, I have another question. Sherry, the update on the daycare, well, school daycare, you know, the Plaza right there. Is there any update?
No, there's nothing yet, so.
Okay.
As soon as there is, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
They're going to move, they're throwing to the shops, right?
Yeah, they're taking out a few of those empty stores, that's correct.
Right, because he did tell me that, in conversation with him, that they're supposed to be taking two of those stores up.
Right, she's going on that truck in the daycare.
That we currently have bat tons, yeah, bat tons, bat. How did that just come on?
Yes.
How about that so long?
Right, right.
All right. Move to that's Finance Director, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple things. We have started receiving the cash flow money, this flow that come in. And the second thing is I have already transferred the money over to where we borrowed from. Approximately about $415,000 has been transferred back to the appropriate funds. The next thing is the financials, the February financials will be available, available by June 10, 15. The Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Report, that is due on March 31st, put them to their fight, but it's my report.
Just, Mr. Mayor, did I hear that Chief, University Tower, Tower of Northwest mitigation?
Yeah. All right, move to Public Control and Security, you received Director Rick Council.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Over the last two weeks, we have responded to full team incidents, one vehicle, accident, five firearms, four school patrols, two CO lines, one stove fire, and one electrical fire, and I think we've been in touch with people.
Thanks, sir. Move to Relations Commission, Commissioner Steve Shin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to report that the next meeting, the University Station, is on April 6th at 7:00 PM here in the village hall, and in between that time, we have a diversity dinner, and to find out how to get one of the applications on the back table, or talk to me or Frank Williams after the meeting. And what diversity dinner is, it's an informal dinner where we get together with a bunch of people to talk about diversity, and you end up finding out just how much the same yard, and it's, it's pretty good. We had a diversity dinner at the senior center, and it turned out pretty well, and, you know, a lot of discussion, and, you know, for people who might not, not feel comfortable in a open setting, you know, instead of private hall, and, you know, that's, that's where people do, they get together, and they discuss diversity, and, you know, add meaning to other people to it, and, you know, it's a real comfortable setting. And like you say, our next meeting is on April 6th, on the first Monday, and every month is at 7:00 PM. And the deadline for that diversity dinner is 3/21, so hurry to get your applications in. Also, we are still looking for those to fill the vacancy. Please get your plans in interest of the air and eggs, and we'd like to fill that seat as soon as possible. That's it, that is my report.
All right, okay. Now, I'll be the senior, Mr. Mayor. And to Senior Committee, Chairperson Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senior, uh, for the sponsor senior organization have resumed their regular schedule now, as spring is coming. Seniors 50 and older are welcome to visit prior to joining one of the more organization. The Monday Sunshine is having the St. Pass Pop-Up Dinner on March 16th. East Chicago will have their corned beef and cabbage meal on March 25th. The Sunday Fun Club would like to thank the candidates and village trustees and public who attended the forum Saturday. We do apologize to one of our taxpayers, who is providing public service, who is harassed at both the forum on Thursday and Saturday. First, on Thursday, the one event was shown on video. Fun Club Basic Line Dance Instruction will resume as needed. Saw Village Uber has continued Sunday, 6 to 10:00 PM, again at 11:15. The open senior activity is this Friday, March 13th, from 12 to 3:00 PM. The paperback book exchange program continues to be successful, and we want to thank you for all the continuous donors and participants. Special thanks goes to Nagin Morgan, she's the wife of committee member Floyd, for assistance in filing books. The Saturday, March 14th, is the 57th Annual Chili Cook Off. There'll be line dance instructions at noon, live entertainment, North Rise's 50/50 Raffle. Chili chefs are still welcome for monetary prizes. You can see flyers in the bag there for detailed information. The next Bloom Township Senior Community Lunch, it's your birthday, is feature, featuring the Peter Caro Trio on Tuesday, March 24th. Limited tickets are on sale at the township office through March 17th unless they're sold out. They have other programs, they have 2015 trips to the casino, Brooklyn Zoo, Planetarium, Aquarium, Temple Garden. They do have basic line dance classes, the four-week sessions at $8. They have Wednesday and Friday cheer exercise, free legal assistance for pressure screening, art, smart driving courses, health insurance assistance, especially if you have questions on Medicare Part B. They have income tax preparation by appointment only, low-cost senior wheels, transportation, 708, 754, 8200. They do have walkers available from their rolling closets. So for any additional information, you can call Bloom Township, 708-754-9400, extension 244 for additional information and our services. The next senior committee meeting will be this Thursday, March 12th at 5:00 PM. Thank you, this ends my report.
Thank you. Move to consent agenda, ask if there's anything that the trustees would like to remove?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move item 6C, 6D to new business, please.
All right. Motion second to remove item C and D, with a big move to new business. Item C will be now item 7B, and item B will now be item 7C. A motion second, any questions, comments, or anything that you'd like to have removed? You can send agenda forward. If you have anything to ask the trustee, please call them.
Burgess?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Judge.
Oscar?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
My motion carries. Have the consent agenda? There's nothing to ask for, motion to approve consent agenda as amended. Motion second, the trustee please call them.
Burgess?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Judge.
Oscar?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we can move to seven to new business. Item A, motion to approve councilable disbursements for February 25th, 2015 to March 10th. 2015 is our motion to approve. Motion for second?
Second.
Now, motion second, any questions or comments? If you have anything to ask the trustee, please call them.
Burgess?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Yeah.
Oscar?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, move to item 7, 7B, motion to approve special meeting minutes of February 17th, 2015 is our motion to approve. Motion second, any questions or comments? If you have anything to ask the trustee, please call them.
Burgess?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Yeah.
Oscar?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, move to item 7C, motion to approve, and hold the second session minutes of February 17th to 2015 is our motion to approve.
No, second.
Motion second, any questions or comments? If you have anything to ask the trustee, please call them.
Burgess?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, move to item number eight, assigning comments to the mayor and board trustees.
Thank you. This is a reminder, anybody who submits an essay for student government day, essays are due by Friday, the 27th. Submit it to the electronic, please.
Email?
Email. No, for student government day.
For your own personal report?
Yeah.
For a new due report, so you do, for your way, if you have multiple days, and you need multiple reports, please, and please. 27th, Friday.
If there's any trustees that's not going to hear, please let the trustee know, also should you plan accordingly for the individual, it's going to be sitting in your seat.
And don't forget that day, that we'd like you to be here by 6:15 at the latest for pictures. Thank you very much. It's a boy in the industry, so.
Yeah, so we're expecting a lot of people. We're trying to, well, the agenda will probably be pretty light, if you would say. We don't think we have anything on this, so as we prepare for it, if there's something that, as a trustee, we're going to hold against, please let us know, because we don't want to have the kids in that situation holding against something that may, they're, you know, in favor of it, so. We also want to make sure that you get councilable early prior to that, so if we have any changes to a councilable prior to the student government night, let's make sure that we get that to the board also. So again, remember, that night is for the kids, so we don't make it as painful as possible for them, but it's something that you can go back on, and hopefully, you never know. You know, some of those kids that sat on student government nights years ago, you know, trustees or Sawville, so something that they may come back and want to be, or, you know, try to figure out later on, so. Anything else? All right, trustee Myers.
I have one question for Kevin. A while back, a couple years back, we was able to pick up some unagreed saving light logs, some comment. We still have contact, because we're, we're starting to see if they'd play toward the student rights on night, to keep the crime rate down, and that's sure will help the neighborhood watch community, if we can see if we can get a few more of those laws handed out to the residents. Did you check?
I can definitely check into it, and I hope we don't have any more left. It's been probably about six years now, so, all we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee, if you would, get me a letter from Neighborhood Watch, to have a better request sheet to find out any files, maybe like send about, the mayor's office, or also probably Neighborhood Watch.
We'll let the clerk track that one, and I have to balance them, you're off, we'll define it, we ship it out.
It's fine, if you get it on my desk, I'll send it to you.
Thank you, madam.
Just want to let the residents know, this past Saturday, I had the pleasure of meeting with and being in Timmy Park with Senator Hastings, and just to let the residents know, I, I was talking to Senator Hastings about our community, I know he doesn't represent us, but, you know, he is a senator, he is listening, and he basically told me, any questions I ever had, I can give him a call as well. And I was talking about the program, the mayor was talking about the LDGF program, the funds that the mayor's talking, or I'm sorry, the governor is addressing, and I just stressed to the senator how much that we definitely want to know for that, we need our funds desperately, so just to let the residents know. I am out, I am working for you all over Coke County and other municipalities, and here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody of the Mascholli Dinner Fundraiser, that will be Sunday, March 22nd, at Community Center from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. This is a fundraiser to help the two girls, Canada Hansen and Rebecca Anfield, who are going on a mission trip. It's $5, and it will be available at the door. That includes mascholli, salad, bread, and a drink. Tickets will be available, purchase through the bank center at the door, and there will also be a silent auction and a bake sale, so just want to remind everybody of that, it's a good cause, so please, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. Uh, one, the other committee that trustee Myers is chairing, the debt recovery committee, is what's stationed by her board, right? Will it be over the agenda to give a report on that? At these meetings?
I did a report on the Orange Review tonight, and I gave a update on the debt recovery committee.
I know, that's why I'm asking, will you be doing that at all of the meetings? At these meetings, will you be giving a kind of report on that, other committee, I know it's not listed on here?
At the next conference, I'll be giving a report on one of those.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask, Chief Alavis, what is the procedure for a K-9, because they've been watching you yesterday? And I had told them previously, when I had spoken to you, any officer, anyone from the police department cannot just come to a Neighborhood Watch meeting without getting permission from you, the chief, because if they come on their own, and it's their working schedule, then, if they, that's one thing that you have to know, that they're not on the streets or whatever, that they are there, they have, that you know first, and then if they're off work and they're coming, it could be considered as overtime. So I just want to mention that I did give the Neighborhood Watch Committee the right information. No officer can come to the Neighborhood Watch meeting that we have, unless it's first approved by you. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, we will have our town hall meeting, it will be right here from 7:00 to 8:30. Please come out, it's going to be very informative. They'll bring you questions, bring you concerns, and hope to see you there. That's next Wednesday, March 18th, here at Village Hall from 7:00 to 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Uh, just want to run through some of these things really quick here. On March 21st, there's a community pancake breakfast, which is being held at the trail from 10 o'clock to 12:00 PM. I said I made an announcement for that. Congressman Willie Kelly is hosting the College Savings Night on April 2nd, 2015. It's going to be held at Madison. Congressman Louie Kelly is hosting a college savings night on April the second, two thousand fifteen, that's going to be held at Madison, our Madison Public Library from six o'clock to eight o'clock P.M. She's also hosting a housing expo, which is on the fourteenth also, there's a lot going on the fourteenth, that's from nine A.M. to one P.M. And that's going to be at New Faith Baptist Church at twenty-five Central Avenue in Madison, Illinois. There's more things that I need to talk about, just a board note, and there's going to be a lobby day down in Springfield on April twenty-ninth. It's an all-day event, it's where we're trying to get as many elected officials down in Springfield, if you're free on the twenty-ninth, I need to know. And if you'd like to go to this event, I'll link it up to the board, this is usually something that I attend, but we're trying to get as many elected officials down in Springfield on that day. So please let me know, so we can plan accordingly, but it's April twenty-ninth, it's an all-day event. And lastly, been a lot of talk about the budget, where we're at on the budget, on the mayor's Facebook page, you can go out there, you can see I put a stoplight versus on the budget. And where we're at, and the board should make sure you take a look and understand, you know, red light, it's something we need to definitely take a look at, green light is good, and yellow light is a caution. When we look at the budget as a whole, if you break it down by funds, this is through January, three months left in the budget. Every fund right now is currently in green light. You should take a look at the general fund as a total, the general fund expenditures as of January was five point seven million versus a budget of six point seven million. Fire fund, as of January, expenditures were five hundred seventy-one thousand versus a budget of five hundred ninety thousand. Water fund, a budget of four point four million versus, expenditures of four point four million versus a budget of five point two million. Sewer fund has only spent six hundred fourteen thousand versus a budget of seven hundred point one thousand. There's a lot of talk about the budgets, and then there's a lot of talk about line items. There is line items over, there's a lot of things that, if you got questions coming, you say exactly why they're over. We figured last year's budget was passed before we had negotiations with our unions. We went off and our union contracts were negotiated, some of these were back over to two thousand and twelve. Union employees had to be paid back to two thousand and twelve, every year that they got raises for those contracts, they had to go back and give those raises, they had to go back and give other things that were involved in those contracts. So we're over in those areas, we also settled on some incorporated litigation last year. And again, those are things that's hard to budget for, but we ended up getting no delegation off our books, and ended up settling on those. So if you look at, you know, areas in the budget, you look at the funds, and you can give an example, the general fund covers administration, elected officials, public grounds, buildings, police department, the community developed, as the streets, parks, and playgrounds. All these, insurance dispatch center, you know, again, covers all those areas underneath that one fund. If you break it down, looking at some of these, you know, under administration only, I'm giving administration a red light, okay? I do that because as of January, our expenditures under administration are one point million, one point eight million versus a budget of one point six million. Again, there's things that we're not budgeted for that we got off our books. So are we over, yes, we're over as of January by a couple hundred thousand dollars, but again, we've settled. Again, we look at our overtime in our departments, you look at, you know, we're not filling positions in our departments. So as departments, the people that left, we've lost some of the deaths, there's some over at departments, we didn't not fill those positions. You know, the fire department lost something to the fire chief, the fire chief has opened up the fire department for warning stations. You know, things that we've done in the last couple of years, but we haven't done before, really. So and we had to make it to bad ones, so. Again, we've got stuff that we're doing, again, as we're looking at this next contract, this next budget, we're looking at stuff like this. But the police department, I'm tearing out police department, they're got a green light. Police department expenditures are two point six million dollars versus nearly a three million dollar budget, so three months ago. I've given the fire department the old way, I talked to the fire chief about it, that while they're within the amount that they're supposed to spend, expenditures of five hundred seventy-one thousand versus their budget of five hundred ninety thousand as of January. We're still have not received two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars for that budget. So right now, currently, the gentleman say that the fire fund right now is running off the general fund, it's helping the fire fund until those funds come in. So it's a yellow light, you know, we're pretty confident that we're going to see those funds come in, because we haven't received them yet, so. That has the green light, you know, expenditures of fifty-two thousand versus a budget of fifty-four thousand. Streets, a budget of thirty-seven thousand, they always spent about ten thousand as of January. Now, water department, four point four million versus a budget of five point two million, sewer, six hundred fourteen thousand versus a budget of seven hundred twenty-one thousand, so. So when you hear things out there, people want to talk about the budget, and you know, we heard everything about how we're on the bankrupt, we heard how we're not going to be able to make payroll. You know, we got the person that's going to finance right, and you know, he had a lot less hair to get than he had when he started. And he's gotten, getting a lot less sleep, because he can't sleep at night, and I think he keeps a bottle cup of this one next to his chair, but you know, he's watching this very closely. I know the department that first they had more money coming towards them, but you know, we're watching this budget very closely, we're trying to make sure to spend your money wisely. So you know, again, there's a lot of talk out there on the streets, and then people are trying to, well, you know, if you don't believe me, go to the front window, ask for a budget. You know, and look at the bottom line number, you know, people want to take on line items, okay, we're over on certain line items, we can tell you why, there's reasons for it. Ask, you know, another one of you asking why? But this is something that, you know, we've done this year, because you know, when I hear stuff, I want to see how true it is. Someone comes up to me and says, oh, your budget's way out of proportion. Well, first and foremost, I'm on the budget saying, we're not out of proportion. So you know, this is something that we're probably going to start putting out quarterly, so that we can have this information out there for the residents. And I think you probably can see this, but sometimes people can say stuff that's not true, and people believe it, so. That's on the mayor's Facebook page, if you want to take a look at it, we're trying to go on out. Talk about budgets real quick, I wanted to have a budget before the village board already, but with the governor coming out with his cuts. Looking very close at the budget this next year, it's a very tough budget. I met with mayors, I met with mayors yesterday, I've been meeting mayors again tomorrow night, and I'm meeting mayors in the surrounding communities on Friday, who will meet the other with the governor. Talking with some of the governors, I'm sorry, talking with some of the mayors, you know, this hits all of us, you know, throughout the entire state of Illinois, with the cuts that the governor's talking about. Some of the mayors that already had budgets already passed within their communities, and now they're looking at going back and changing those. Some of the mayors where I'm at is we put it on hold to find out technically what's going to happen, and passing two budgets, I'm not in favor of passing two budgets, I'll be honest with you, but. You're talking about passing one budget as if they're going to receive all the funds that they're supposed to receive, you're talking about passing a second budget right along with it, is if the governor's cuts continue to stay where they're at. That's a little bit difficult, you know, the way I look at it, so we are planning accordingly on this budget, and taking the governor's cuts very seriously. And how it's going to affect our community, the services that we provide, we have to, we have to take the cuts very seriously. So again, I've taken a little bit of time off work this week, so that, you know, I can represent you, the residents of South Village. And I don't have a problem with it, because you know, I'm a resident of South Village also. So taking time off at work, so I can be at these meetings, so I can get all the information, so that, you know, when we come back and work on these budgets this next year, that is something that we can live with. And it's going to be tough, and you know, the corporations here, I mentioned this last time, I was saying, is there's some of the senators saying, we all need to have a take care of that. And that was their saying yesterday, you know, they all got this, you know, we all have to have care of that. But you had some senators up there, Senator Hacey was one of those, you know, he comes from, his father's a mayor, so he understands. He's got other senators out there that have been in municipalities, where they've been offering, they've been trustees, so they understand the residents and stuff, and how we use that money. So there were senators sitting up there that were listening, while there's senators up there thinking that they can just take the money, it's not going to affect us, it's not going to affect the small communities, it's going to. Keep a close eye on, you know, and again, if you get a chance, go out to, you know, I M O has a site on Facebook, they also have a website. Go out to those websites, and I encourage residents, I've already encouraged the village board, go out there and click on that link and oppose those cuts that the governor is presenting. I propose it in the House and Senate, so.
I apologize to mayor and the board, I forgot to mention something, and it's more or less a bonus on a personal note. The forum, I missed the last forum, and I truly apologize for that, I know it's been on Facebook, but I don't care, I do care. And that hit me personally, because I do care. I have a family, I'm working, I was working for Paul, I went and made money on that Saturday, and also Saturday night, I also worked as well, in the Sunday morning. So Ms. Langston was aware of it, I told her more than one person what was happening, but to the residents, I'm sorry. I apologize for not being there to take your questions, I have a phone number, it's out there, call me. I have a phone number here, call me, leave a message, email me, tell me your questions, tell me your concerns, I'll answer. But again, I truly am very sorry that I was not there, I do apologize, thank you.